I will call the meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call again. Mayor Kratsky, I am present. Moko?
Here.
Groko?
Here.
Kufal?
Here.
Padilla?
Present.
And Iker?
Here.
We have one change to the agenda for tonight. Under Fire Department, nine F I, we have a resignation. I think everyone's got a letter from James King, so we'll add that to the agenda. And I think that's the only change.
That's the only one, yes.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Iker. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Seconded by Padilla. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Comments, updates, concerns? Do we have any citizens who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, council members? Any updates? And city staff?
I just have two quick items. Question for you. Last year during our, I think it was during our budget discussions, we talked a little bit about salaries and so forth, and you'll recall, we've utilized David Drowns in the past for a wage analysis study. You agreed, or you discussed last year about doing it every other year. So we didn't do one last year. I'm just asking if you'd like me to go ahead and solicit a proposal for them for a wage analysis this year.
That's what we talked about last year. I have no opposition to it.
Yeah, I think we probably should, just so we can keep up.
I mean, I'll bring back the proposal and you can decide, but I just wanted to get a consensus to move ahead with that, at least doing that.
Do we have to do it every other year?
I'm just repeating what you guys had talked about last year.
It just seems like that's a lot of money to keep spending every other year.
What was the last one? Was it around five?
I think it was under that.
It was under five?
Yeah.
Why don't we just-
I want to say around four.
See what the proposal might be and then we can decide if we want to do it or not, if we think it's-
Are you fine with that, Tony?
Yeah, I just don't know any others. It seems like a lot of money to spend every other year, just to-
Get the proposal and we can look at it and then turn it down if- Or what? What are you thinking?
In my opinion, every other year is too much, too often to do it.
How often do you think it should be done? Every three?
Is that's in favor?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
I'd say three to five. I won't offend anybody.
My only comment would be is, you know, we're in an environment right now where there is a lot of changes as far as salaries and things of that nature, and it might be helpful just to see how we measure up or how we compare us.
You know, my, my comment to that, Steve, is I think that every one of our employees was over that ninety percentile mark for cities of our size, ninety percentile or higher. So I, I don't know that we're going to fall out of that in two years.
One year?
So. I don't know that going three is gonna- Just my, that's my take on it. If the council wants to do it every other year, I'm good with that, too.
Only concern I had, the last while, the council tampered quite a bit with positions and, you know, relativity. And so since, since we've tampered with positions and, you know, the police and this and that, seems like enough reason to see more about relativity and not. I agree with what you said, where most everybody was kind of where they were supposed to be, except then why, why were we tampering with the pay grid and the police then?
And that was because of the time we're in.
And because we got money for the police department, for the wages.
Hopefully we don't have to give them another raise.
What do you think?
I, I would like to see that we wait a little longer, too. I'm just, to me, we should be able to kind of know what the climate is amongst cities our size, what's going on. I mean, we shouldn't, to me, we shouldn't have to hire somebody to, we should kind of feel what wages are and do, I don't think we need to do that every year, hire someone to do that. And we should kind of be able to look what's Arlington doing or some of the communities around us and, you know, they do a wage study, well then, oh, we gotta bump our stuff up. Well, now the next community, now they're in that situation, we have to do a wage study because they just bumped theirs or, I just think we, we should be able to look more at the market ourselves and determine versus paying somebody big money to come and do that.
And another option that we have to go along with what you're saying, Steve, if you feel like we're completely out of compliance, is the League of Minnesota's Cities has the ability for you to compare cities. They have, you can pull cities like size, you can put in the population, and they're, they're doing it again. So you could do a comparison in Glencoe, that's exactly what they just did, and the study was presented to the council, and that's how they did their pay raises most recently. So if you feel that we're not anywhere close to where we need to be, or you want to present that to the council or to the employees or whatever, you have the ability to pull that, those numbers. And they're requested from the league, I believe, every year, aren't they, from all the cities?
Yeah, and we do participate in that salary survey every year, so we're, we're able to gather that data, yes. My concern isn't necessarily that we're out of whack, but I, I certainly don't want to get far behind to the point where we're making jumps or something like that. I'd rather at least be aware. I, I certainly agree with Scott is saying that we can collect data as well from, especially the area cities. It's something easily, easy to do in the league. You're right, you're exactly right. That is another resource. The city just had utilized this consultant in the past. I don't think we have to be married to this consultant. There's other options, as you've already pointed out. So if that's the direction you want to go, I, again, I brought this up because this is what you discussed last year.
Well, quit listening to us.
Yeah.
They do, they do a great job. They really do. They do a great job with identifying jobs and, and with ranges. They do a really good job. I just feel that you could also keep us in line with the years that they're, they're not coming out.
If that's your direction, I, I can certainly look at that, and I think there's some useful data there that we could help with your decision-making.
We didn't do it last year. We're talking about doing it this year. Compromise, can we put it on the calendar for January? I mean, we're looking, I mean, it's almost six months away. We're talking, we're halfway through the year here.
What do you-
Potentially go out for RFPs or, or a proposal-
Have a study done next-
In Ja, we're talking about in January, see if we go out and get a proposal? Put it on the calendar for now. Bring it back to council.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, we can bring it up again in January and just see what, see if things have changed significantly or where things are at, whether we would-
So we're just putting it for a year, basically twenty twenty-five. We generally don't do it until roughly around this time of year, because then it'll be, I mean, leading up to our budget time. So probably in the spring or something like that.
Yeah. I, I don't, I still, I guess I don't, if, if you want to look at where we're at on the league, I'm not a-
And maybe we can see what we gather and see how your comfort level is once we get that data. And if you want to just stick with that route, that's an option then.
That seems reasonable. I like that idea.
Okay. The other thing, quickly, I wanted to just mention our contract with our auditors, Abdol. We just went through the last audit that was part of that contract, so you've asked me to bring up these things when we have a renewal. So I'm just looking for a consensus. If you want me to solicit a quote from them for to renew their, it was a three-year contract.
Yep.
I think they do good, good work.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, I'll do so.
Dang it, we just saved five thousand dollars this year.
Anything else? We'll move on to the consent agenda and I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion by Iker.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any questions or comments, discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We don't have any public hearings tonight. There's some communication requests and petitions, the Senior Center Newsletter, Recycling Collection Dates, and Sibley County Royalty Fundraiser. Moving on to department and committee reports and action items, we can skip down to N I N C with Public Works. Ty come up here and talk to us about several different items.
Good evening, everybody. The first, first thing I have tonight is just adding three more employees to the Aquatic Center staff. Their applications came in later than everybody else's, and I believe all three of them are lifeguards, too. So we're just looking to approve those additional employees.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion by Padilla, seconded by Iker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The second thing I have tonight is some crack sealing quotes for this year. The last time we tried to crack seal was twenty twenty, and we, the, the person that, that was going to do it accepted the bid, then dropped out because of this pandemic year and couldn't find any employees. We tried to contact him again, and I don't know if he's out of business now or what, but so, we got two different quotes, one from M R paving and one from Bargain. And we, I had them do three different bids for, because we go by how much it costs per pound to apply it. We did a five thousand, a ten thousand, and a fifteen thousand rate. We would like to do a fifteen thousand rate because we need a lot of crack sealing. That needs to be done in town. Now's the time to do it. So we're asking the council to approve the, the project award for fifteen thousand at two dollars and ninety cents per pound to Bargain.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Moko, seconded by Iker. Any discussion or questions?
Have you ever dealt with them before?
What?
Have you ever dealt with them before?
I haven't personally, but I know Kirby from Arlington uses them quite a bit.
Okay.
They're very well-respected company, yeah.
I've had a lot of experience with them.
You have?
Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll remove, move on to the repair of Third Street.
Yeah, so the third thing is a mastic repair on Third Street. It's, Third Street's a well-traveled road, and we cold patch it every year, and it just gets worse and worse. I mean, we're running out of, to where we can't cold patch anymore. It's just going to make it worse. So I don't know if anybody's familiar with a mastic repair. It's kind of a, I hate to say, a hybrid between a crack seal and an asphalt, but it's like a heavy rubber with aggregate in it that dries. You actually have to, you pour it on, but you, you smooth it out and it hardens really well. So I know Winthrop uses it, Arlington uses it, the Highway Department uses it. And it's all, they said it's, it's good for about seven years. So I, I think that if we do this, I think we could probably save that road and keep it relatively smooth until we decide to do a re, you know, reconstruct on that, that road. So like I said, we've, we've passed it every year, and it just doesn't-
It's terrible.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Do they take like a top layer of it off then?
Not for, not for the mastic, no.
They just go right over the, is it like an inch?
There's some-
So they, they did an overlay probably in the eighties on that road. It used to be a county road. And there's already a two-inch overlay over the original road. So it's quite, that road's quite old.
It's got some crown, extra crown in it.
Yeah, so.
I'll, I'll think with that mastic-
What they do is they just fill in the, the wide cracks and the potholes, and they try to smooth them out as best they can so you won't get any rough humps out there. If you've driven through Winthrop or even down the highway, you saw those wide, black splotches.
Yeah, the patches, like?
Yeah, they're kind of like a patch, but yeah, they smooth it out with hot irons. And yeah, it's really good stuff. So we did get two quotes for that, again, from M R and one from Bargain. Bargain's was cheaper at twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And I can tell you the reason M R paving's is higher is because basically everybody around here uses Bargain's either equipment or they buy the material right from Bargain to do their stuff. So we get a little bit cheaper going directly to them, plus their experience, and they, they, that's what they do. So.
Does the, does the bid get any cheaper if they end up doing both the crack sealing and the?
I wish. Well, I, I actually got a couple different quotes from him because he did it per block. I'm like, we might as well do the whole thing. And also got, next year, if this goes well, I'd like to do Sibley Avenue between Fourth and Sixth Street. So he gave me a quote for that, just so I could see how much it costs for next year. So, because that needed, that, again, that's another road that's well-traveled and needs it. So. So yeah, I'm just, we recommend moving ahead with the project, and we're asking the council to approve.
We're looking for a motion to approve the mastic repair of Third Street from Bargain Incorporated in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Groko.
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move on to the seal coating quotes.
Okay, the, this year's seal coating project, it is fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine square yards. It'll include Tenth Street south of Lincoln to Main, and then a block and a half of Main till, to Eighth Street and Jefferson Avenue. Basically, what we're doing was we're covering all of our one-inch overlays from last year. And then next year, we'll, we'll finish up twenty twenty-three's project. So we did get three quotes. You'll notice on there, M R paving's is a little bit less than Pearson Brothers, but did some calling around the aggregate that Allied and Pearson uses, and that what we've been using for years and years is a gray trap rock. And M R quoted us with red quartzite, which is cheaper, but I know I've, if I wouldn't have asked, they would have just showed up with red, you know. So we're recommending that we stay with the same and go with Pearson Brother bid of forty-two thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and six cents to do that project.
And Ty mentioned, next time we go out for seal coating, we'll specify-
We'll spec that out, yeah. So, because we've never had to spec that, but it was brought up.
We, we, we haven't, we've had very, we've been very fortunate. We haven't had any stripping or anything like that with these seal coats on our streets with this type of rock and oil and everything else, so.
Right.
Going to try to switch it up and then-
Yeah.
So.
I agree with Ty, so.
This includes the fog ceiling?
Yes. Yep.
Good catch.
Yep, thank you.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the seal coating quote from Pearson Brothers in the amount of forty-two thousand and six cents, forty-two thousand dollars and six cents.
So moved.
We have a motion by Iker. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Padilla. Any further question or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
If you don't mind, I'd like to skip down to the change order first.
Sure.
This is, this is kind of, has to do with the twenty twenty-four street project. With favorable pricing for this year's street project, the city asked for a change order to include a full-depth recumeration, grading, and compacting of part of Industrial Avenue just east of Eighth Street. I know we talked about this probably six, seven, eight years ago, to include that on a project sooner or later to do just that. I know there was some pictures included on there. I think anybody that's driven it knows it's bad. I mean, it doesn't get heavily traveled, so it's well worth just grinding it up and compacting it down, basically making it into a gravel road.
Is that just part of that street or is it from Eighth to Seventh?
I think it'll be probably three-quarters of that block, yeah, because it does turn pretty good the further you go east, yeah. The total cost for this change order is four thousand, eight hundred and five dollars, and that will, Nielsen's blacktop will do that, so.
I'm sorry, so you're not, you're saying just three-quarters of the block is, fortunately, is good?
Is bad. And about a quarter, about a quarter of the block is good.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, yep, yep. So we're just asking council to approve that change order.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the change order for the twenty twenty-four street project for Industrial Avenue just east of Eighth Street for four thousand, eight hundred and five dollars?
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Kufal. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Padilla. Further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The third thing, and third and last thing, was a little bit of a discussion for a deck on the front of the band shell. I know this has been talked about in parks, the park, park board meeting before. A couple people I did talk to that said that when they have the, the music under the oaks, the singers like to, they'll either get out of the bandstand and actually stand in front of it because it echoes so bad where they stand. And I know, but it's been discussed before, and I think years and years and years ago, there used to be one on the front of that, apparently. But what we would propose is, if we were going to do this, is to build one that's not attached, so it wouldn't interfere with any, if we ever decided to go get any federal grant money to restore that. It wouldn't touch. It'd be really close, but it wouldn't be touching, yeah. So what we came up with was a sixteen feet wide by twelve feet deep deck out in the front of that. So that basically spanned that, that railing that we put up for safety's sake. Tom put together just a list of materials, Menards list of materials, how much it'd cost us. And we're talking probably thirty, right around thirty-five hundred dollars in materials. That includes probably, that probably includes sonotubes because we've got to put some footings in, probably six footings, and railing. What we proposed to do for the railing is, instead of buying the whole railing, because it's a super expensive, is to put posts up and run a luminized, powder-coated cable through there, so it's easier to see the band. Although it's still a railing, but it's a cable probably every six inches. It makes it easy to see through. It's kind of the, the newer style, I guess, of railings. But like I said, we can do this, but it's going to have to probably wait until fall with how busy everything is right now. So it'll be for, for, basically built for next year, next year's deal. I think if you had somebody build it, you're probably, you might as well just, whatever your materials cost, you're probably going to double it. So.
What are you looking for, the materials, as far as the decking, are you putting treated or did you get like?
Like a brown treated, yeah. Not just a regular pressure treated, like a brown treated, you know. That seems to look pretty good, you know, without having to go to cedar or, or, you know, the composite stuff, yeah.
I like the idea. Ever since I've been on park board, I've been worried about the tripping hazards where that wall is open. It used to be a chain that started eating into the wood.
Yep.
But even the fence here, there, it's nice, but it's low. It would be easy for someone to step right over, so.
Right.
I think a deck would also create some safety. There's a lot of kids that hang out there when they're down at the park.
Yeah, like I said, it's been discussed a bunch of times in, during park board meetings about improvements to that, that general area.
And I do remember the deck. It was there when I was a kid, so there definitely was a deck there at one point.
So.
So yeah, it's good the materials.
Yeah, we'll, let's, we'll come back and give you a little more detailed price list and, and a timeline for that in a future council meeting. But as long as we kind of got the go-ahead, this, this is something we want to do, we'll get a little more in-depth on it, so.
I just like that you guys are motivated to take on additional projects.
Right.
They're willing to do this kind of stuff. It's, it's really neat.
Well, I know lately we've tackled a lot of, a lot of safety issues. We've kind of cleared up. I know Steve went down to Tom's shop the other day. There's one, a big safety deal with the, they said the grates, the drainage grates down there. That's something else we were trying to get tackled. So, yeah, let's clean it up nice. And yeah, we're trying to do some of these projects, as many as we can ourselves, you know.
They have the knowledge. That's pretty neat.
So, all right.
Hey, by the way, I, I talked to Tom the other day while he was out killing part of our population.
Right.
Really appreciate that. I, I think I could stand outside for a few minutes last night without getting eaten alive. So thanks for going out. If you guys went out every other day, that'd be awesome, but really appreciate it.
I think we're, we're going to try to go out next week again.
Oh, they're really, really bad.
Especially with all the water.
Yeah.
That had to be a long day, wasn't it, for Tom?
Huh?
Wasn't that a long day for Tom? Wasn't he up early with the water and everything?
Yeah, usually, yeah. So, but we give him plux time for that. I just, I, I just got one thing I just want to add. On Monday, of course, everybody knows we had a ton of rain really quick. Just saying, when I got, the alarm called me at twenty after four, I got up, I was out the door at four twenty-five, and I already had two inches of water in my basement. So just to give you an idea how bad it was, we had to bypass both lift stations, of course, and we calculated, we pumped just onto the ground about just under two million gallons, just so our pumps could keep up. So it did come quick and it came fast, and it stayed fast until probably about eleven, eleven-thirty, so. It was just, we weren't the only ones. Winthrop did it, Arlington did it, Henderson did it. It sounds like everybody was doing it, trying to get-
On that note, I've been doing some thinking because I drove by while you guys were pumping.
Yep.
Five forty-five in the morning. You know, we look at how much time and money and effort that's been put in this town in the last five, ten years even, you know, five years for sure, for some of the, you know, we've lined manholes, we've did sewer lining projects already. And, and I know we only had two-point-seven inches of rain, and it came down hard for an hour and a half or whatever it was, but we, we haven't gained anything, you know. When, and, you know, it wasn't a six, seven-inch event. But I guess, you know, you start thinking about this, the I and I, we're never going to get there just by lining our old clay pipes. A lot of these houses, that's where it's coming from. The sump pumps, I know, I know several people I've talked to, they, they don't have a sump pump. They got a basement in that low area town we're talking about.
Correct.
And so that tile goes directly into their sewer service. They're not even aware of it. A lot of homeowners aren't. But a lot of home built in the fifties and sixties, that's the way they were built. And we can keep doing what we're doing in the street, we're never going to take care of that major problem. And one thing we can look at, Glencoe does it by point of sale, and I, I'm not saying I necessarily want to go down that road, but the only way to, the city comes up with a program and identify what properties have this issue, whether it's some testing, smoke testing. Some people just, you know, if they, if they got a basement, they don't have a sump pump. I mean, it's pretty obvious, you know, what's going on. But you can do an outdoor sump pump, but there, there again, you know, I, I think my sister put one in probably eight years ago. It was like five thousand dollars. So now you can assume it's ten or twelve. You know, so the city starts a program, you know. The first thing is to get a list of, ongoing list that you keep adding, you know, we probably have a hundred and fifty of these in town. Who knows? It's more than twenty, I guarantee you that. So it, it's a long road, but if we don't start somewhere, and, you know, whether we fund this to fifty thousand or a hundred thousand a year, you're only talking fixing eight or six, seven, eight of these a year. It might take us fifteen, twenty years, but if we don't start looking at this, we're never going to get ahead of it because those connections aren't going anywhere. They're, they're right next to people's foundation. It's, you know, we're never going to capture this in just street projects. And I, I thought with the amount of money that we spent so far, I really, I thought we were going to look pretty good with that. I know it was- I know it's, usually it don't rain that heavy for an hour and a half, usually twenty minutes or thirty minutes, but um, I, I, I was pretty sad to see that, you know, we had to be pumping. Yeah, and I, I know it's a lot of water, but we, if we ever want to move the needle, we gotta, we're gonna have to look into this.
I know I talked a little bit about that in last fall during the, the presentation I made, like uh, I know even the state and the feder- feds basically say eighty percent of I and I is from private services.
Right, we're not gonna catch it. We're not gonna.
Well, because you figure mo- a lot of our, our sewer lines are underneath the road. I mean, the water's not gonna go through the road, you know, it goes right down the sides of people's houses and off, you spouts and stuff like that. And that's kind of where it ends up. And you can tell by looking at the numbers at the time. Um, you'll get a rain and it'll take usually a half hour. Here it comes to the lift station. It stays high, stays high, and it takes two or three days for it to ease off. So it's all the, well, it doesn't hel- it doesn't help with that, that the ground is saturated as it was. You know, it's really saturated right now.
But I mean, what night?
There's just nowhere for it to go.
Estimate what percentage of the water you're pumping on a lift station is actually rainwater? You know, it's.
Oh, it's a ton.
It's most of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, instead of spending two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars on a lining project, you know, we need to start looking at that because we're just, we're chasing the ten, fifteen percent. We're never gonna make a difference if we don't go after these connections.
But didn't we talk about spending the money and doing whatever so you could tell which houses?
We talked about it.
Yeah. You'd have to basically televise.
Smoke test, televise.
Televise is.
I didn't think it was a televised.
Lateral, laterals or?
Yeah, televising laterals, because I don't think a smoke test wouldn't pick up a, a ground tile. Because it's gotta have somewhere to vent.
I was surprised. Too much water must have came off the field there at the end of Maine.
So this fall, we are, there's three manholes out in that field. And that's another one of the problems. The farmers keep hitting it, so they're not sealed. So this fall, we're gonna bury all three of them.
You're talking the ones way out there.
Off of Tenth Street.
Yeah, but on the north side.
Correct.
Scott's talking over there.
Right, right at the end of Maine here.
Oh, yeah.
There was a lot of debris and.
Oh, coming right out of the field. Yeah.
A lot.
Yep. So.
We raise, we paid to raise them, so they.
Yeah, and they keep hitting them. So now we're, we never, we've never had to clean them because they're all plastic. And they're good sized lines and we get a lot of flow through them, so we're gonna have them buried about two and a half feet deep and have them sealed, the top sealed. We have a bunch of them out in the, like the field by the, the school, uh, over by South Prairie Park. Those are all buried out in those fields. And we've never had an issue with them, so. I think that's probably the best thing to do, is get them out of the way and get them, get them sealed off, so they're permanently sealed on the top, so.
Do you have any problems with the ponds then or anything? Like I don't know the flood in fourteen, they had to drain the ponds because there was so much water.
Uh, not that much. We, we went out and measured yesterday, or Tuesday, yeah, yesterday. And it hasn't ra- it's raised up, but it's not raised up. I know, I think fourteen, the, the water actually came out of the field over the dike into the pond. Because they, you guys had so much water and they had to do an emergency discharge at that time, so. Uh, like I say, we're not too, we're not tha- that bad yet, so we got plenty of room, so.
Table's in my backyard now, better.
Yeah. Well, if you go by the stormwater pond out here, you can barely see the tops of those three islands, so.
Yeah.
And the dock at the, at the lake is about eight inches underwater right now, so. Everything's high. It's taken a while for it to come down, so. That's all I have unless anybody's got anything else.
Thank you, Ty.
Yep, thank you.
Moving on to nine F, um, the fire department. I think everyone's got a copy of a resignation letter from James King. James has served both on the fire department and the library board, so we're certainly gonna miss him and want to thank him for his service to our community. So we need a motion to approve James's resignation.
So moved.
A motion by Eager. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to new business. We have Jennifer Strack here to talk about the twenty twenty-three annual report um for community education. So we'll invite her up to the podium. Welcome, Jen.
Hello, good evening. I am Jen Strack. I'm the director of community ed at Sibley Schools. Um, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you all and apologize for my absence la- last meeting. We had an emergency. Everything went well, so I apologize for that.
That is okay.
But annually, um, I put together a report for the state of Minnesota and I'm hoping Steve had shared that with you as well. Um, it just shows our participation um in our programs of residents in our air, in our area. So administrator hell get it asked for the report and just asked me to kind of run through it with you for a little and kind of just answer any questions. Um, so as the report states on the first page, a hundred percent of my time is community services. Kind of want to just kind of give you a little rundown of what that entails, kind of what I take care of, what I manage. Um, so adult recreation, enrichment, youth recreation, youth enrichment, aquatics, so that entails the Arlington pool, um, preschool, childcare, uh, the fitness center or our weight room in Arlington campus. Um, and I also do all the facility management, um, the doors and the facility scheduling. So community services, basically anything before school, after school, weekends, all summer long. Um, and the Gaylord Council does have two representatives that meet or are invited to our advisory meetings. So council member Padilla and Mayor Krotzky do come to those meetings and they help communicate the needs of Gaylord into our group. So as you page, turn to page three. It kind of gives you a breakdown of the age brackets of our participants. Um, this changed a few years ago where it was broken down into enrichment, recreation. Now they just have us kind of count via the age of the participant. Um, so we have a strong preschool program. Um, our intention is to add more programming for early learning next year. Um, it's proven that children that are three to four years old, um, that have come in and attended preschool program have an easier time transitioning into kindergarten and they are well above their peers on a social level and an academic level. Our youth recreation and enrichment programs are popular. You can see our numbers from K up to grade twelve. Um, very popular. A lot of recreational opportunities. Um, we've added some new summer programs for this year, so yesterday, um, I held a kitchen basics class. Had ten kids come in and learn about kitchen safety. Um, they learned how to make scrambled eggs. I got a text from a mom today, said, look at what my daughter did. She's practicing her, practicing her skills. She had made breakfast for her brother. Um, we also added a girls that lift, weight lift, weightlifting program. That program's up to almost twenty-five girls. Um, and then I added a kindness club program. Um, I capped at twenty kids for that program and we're gonna meet twice every month this summer. So the cooking and the baking classes are very popular, uh, recreational opportunities. We have tennis camp, uh, we have volleyball camp. Uh, we have basketball camp coming up, um, T-ball, poppers. Um, I added T-ball for second or for ages two and three this year. It's very much organized chaos, um, but the parent is out there on the field with them, um, just teaching them, you know, how to play together is a, is a major thing for our parent education as well. Um, then we go to our adults, um, adult, our adult opportunities come through the enrichment classes and open gym times. Um, we hold open gyms on Sundays and Wednesdays. We get a lot of parents and kids that come in together. Uh, we also have the fitness center over in Arlington. We have about fifty, eighteen plus that have memberships over there. School age care, um, our school age care program for our school age children has been regularly at about sixty kids during the school year. Um, that could be before school or after school or both, before school, after school, depending on the parent's schedules. Our childcare for the summer is full with forty registered kids. Um, the childcare staff does a wonderful job taking them around the Gaylord community. Uh, they had a field trip to the library yesterday. Um, we tried to do the pool today. Uh, weather wasn't on our side. Um, and we're also visiting Bayside Manor as well. Um, so that's been one of the largest community needs that we have seen. Um, facility highlights on the bottom of page three show the usage of the school campus building by other outside groups. In order for an outside group to utilize a facility, they do need a liability certificate that just releases the school of any liability issues that might happen. So in our smaller district, we offer a lot of different opportunities for all of our residents that are inclusive and affordable for all of our families. I also work with a couple insurance companies that do reimburse the families if they take an approved community ed class. They're able to get fifteen or twenty dollars back if they participate in that class. Um, yeah, the program we extend to the residents is all, is from local resources. Um, we don't go outside of our community to bring people in. Um, we can, uh, but we try to use our local resources as much as possible. And with that, I'm happy to field any questions or concerns or any comments that anybody has.
Is the kindness camp, is that mandatory?
Um, it should be. But you can come and help. We would love to have your help.
Yeah. Um, no, I don't, for those of you that don't know, Jen, she's absolutely amazing. I've, I've seen you teach uh T-ball and the next day you're out there uh teaching soccer and uh, you know, you've run a scoreboard at basketball. You're just a master of everything down there, so.
I think they say jack of all trades, master of none.
Come care of the next minute. I mean, I don't know how.
Making cookies for kids.
I don't know how you do it all, but uh, we would definitely be lost without you, so thank you for all that you do. Uh, you're amazing at putting together that brochure and thinking of all the ideas you have for the, the kids, so um, you're uh, you're definitely an asset to, to have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that you do.
So this Gaylord community, um, I've been in here for ten years. I actually started in this building. Um, so it was Gaylord that kind of helped really jumpstart off the community ed programming. When we started community ed programming, we had about five hundred participants per year. Um, I've been here for ten years and we're almost always over two thousand, so it's fantastic.
I don't know how you keep coming up with the ideas, but keep thinking of things.
Outside the box. Things change, you know. Ten years ago, we had different programming than we do now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, next under new business, we have eleven B billboard sign proposal. I'll let Steve start us out on this.
Uh, this is an item that's come from the planning and zoning commission. Uh, earlier this, uh, last month, actually, um, at the commission's regular meeting, uh, we'd been approached by Dwayne Frederickson, who is here this evening representing Circle City Outdoor, um, who are a billboard sign, um, I guess, company. They, they have billboards around the state. Um, they're a smaller company. Um, and they're here to request consideration for the city to allow for billboard signs. Currently in our zoning code, uh, we actually come right out and state that we don't allow billboards in any zoning district currently. Uh, so the, the planning and zoning commission had a fairly lengthy discussion last month. Um, and Dwayne was present at that meeting and was able to provide a lot of input, answer a lot of questions. And ultimately, the P and Z uh showed interest, but uh, they would, before they would move ahead, they would like some direction from the council here, uh, so they're not spinning their wheels, so to speak. Uh, so they want to get your input as far as if this is something that you would like them to pursue as far as researching and possibly coming up with a draft ordinance uh for consideration as an amendment to allow for billboards. Uh, specifically, they were looking at our I three district, um, which is basically encompasses microfoods area over there. Um, I'll let Dwayne speak a little bit for himself, but he did share at the planning and zoning meeting uh, that he'd be looking at um, ten by thirty back-to-back billboards. Um, so basically three hundred square feet. Uh, on highway five was what he was specifically targeting. Again, that would be over by the microfoods area. Um, he had asked about, or he proposed to put one on each side of Tower Street, about four hundred feet apart. And so, um, with that, unless there's any questions for me, I'll let, I'll turn it over to Dwayne here.
Right, Dwayne, does he track? I just put this together because there was some discussion as to.
Dwayne, is it possible you could use the podium? We, we, we're recording this, so it's a, the microphone would be helpful.
Yep. My name's Dwayne Frederickson. I am the president general manager of Circle City Outdoor Advertising. We are a small company as far as outdoor advertising billboards go. Um, our structures are scattered throughout southern Minnesota from as far east as Red Wing uh, and as far west as uh would be Saint James. So uh, that's on highway sixty south and west of, of Mankato. Um, I've, I've got my notes over there, but I can basically just tell you a little bit about what we do. Um, we really focus on small um to medium sized towns and small to medium sized advertisers. So of the company, of the advertisers that we've got, um, we have one that is a national company, which is um Red Wing Shoes. But I've had them as a client for twenty some years, I think, so it started as a billboard down in Red Wing and uh has grown from there slightly, so. Um, we're a pretty conservative company. We don't have a tremendously uh aggressive track record of growing terribly fast. Um, being conservative, we also are pretty, um, uh, we're, we're kind of picky about what we, I can't tell you exactly what it's gonna be on the billboards, but I can tell you what will not be and that um, we stay away from controversial subjects, uh, gentlemen's clubs, things like that. Um, I'm a, we're, we're a pretty straight laced organization, so. We do uh some pro bono work for different organizations. Um, in fact, uh, I've got a little model here. I'm gonna grab that and I'll show it to you here. This is something that, um. So what we're proposing would be two locations. Um, and on those two, they're gonna be double sided, so there's four advertising spots on there. And so the model billboard that I've got over there uh is something that we would print up. We would pay for the printing and installation of it. Um, it wouldn't cost the city of Gaylord anything. And we just do that as a way to be a good neighbor, I guess. Um, you all know several people in town that are in business and if uh we can do some good things for you, perhaps we can, you know, return that favor. Um, oh, what else are, uh, trying to think of if there's anything else here. Let me look through this. Um, the closest locations we have right now are over in Arlington and Green Isle. Um, and I've got a, a document here that shows all of our different advertisers, but um, so just in some of the markets that are close to here, uh, in the center, we have a, a location and that has Diane's Fine Foods and then a local siding company that are roofing and siding, a company that, is it Moldove or something like that? Um, and Montgomery where Steve used to be the city administrator over there. We have four different advertisers. All of them are within the city of uh Montgomery or very close to it. New Prague, uh, we have a couple of locations over there. Again, all servicing just the New Prague area, so. Um, I pride myself on being able to go through the local communities. Now, they're not, I can't promise you that they're all gonna be just local advertisers. In fact, they probably won't be, but if there's any way that I can, um, that's always my first choice. So, um, any questions at all for me?
Dwayne, it looks like you're just guessing at site one and two there. I see you got the, the Griezmann at seconds, northern and westing. You got the precise location. You got the, with the latitude, longitude.
Oh, yeah.
Even on there.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, down to the foot.
Yeah, very particular. Nice.
Well, here's the, um, the land would be owned by the Minnesota Valley Regional Reliquary, which is a very vital piece of infrastructure uh that services several towns. In fact, I have the chairman of the board, Steve Saxon here, um, and uh, some business with them. I'm assuming.
I, Steve, do you have just a minute to stop up here, just, just tell them what it is?
Well, we, we've dealt with Dwayne on. Thank you. So Steve Saxon on the Minnesota Valley Regional Rail Authority, and we've done, uh, we've worked together with Dwayne on some, you've seen him over there in Arlington, Green Isle, so, and they use at least some railroad property to put the billboards up, and it seems to be a very straight-up guy to deal with, so. No problems at all dealing with Dwayne and his company. That's all I got, thanks.
Hey, Steve.
And Dwayne, correct me if I'm wrong, but at planning and zoning, you did have at least one local business interested? Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, I do, um, and that's in my notes, if I look at it, um. So one of them is gonna be, uh, have been a client of yours, of ours in the past, Michael Foods or Michael's Foods. Um, it is right out in front of their building, and so they use that as a recruitment tool, uh, help wanted, if you will. Um, the Sibley County Dairy Association, I believe is what it is. Um, uh, they would like to go up on the boards if we can get one up here, and I've talked to them. That, that's one where we're probably gonna give them a preferential rate, because it's a, their message is gonna be, basically, pay attention to, you're in a rural community, a lot of agricultural, and, um, they wanna have a picture of the Dairy Princesses on there, or the Dairy Princess, I'm not sure how they're gonna do that, but, um, and then, um, basically, keep your eyes open, pay attention to what's going on about, uh, safety. So it's a safety geared message on that. And then, um, I've got a local insurance company, I'm not sure if he wants his name used, but he's been here for twenty years. Um, uh, and he would like to go up on that, so let's, three of the four, um, and then one of them would be the city of Gaylord. Uh, now that, if everything goes great for us, we won't have that up there, uh, if we've got an open spot. We've got two open spots, we're gonna put an available up on one of them, and then the other one will be the city of Gaylord. And it doesn't have to say that, it can be whatever message you think is appropriate. So, um, as far as what color it's gonna be, uh, just 'cause I was born and raised on a farm, um, they're Oliver Green. Uh, and, uh, the walkways, uh, trim on it is, uh, KSIH red. As far as, uh, well, I think I pretty well covered most of the things that I wanted to talk to you about, I guess if there's any questions, the, they are all steel. Um, they will, they're engineered for a hundred and ten mile an hour wind, which is the current requirements. Um, so they're very well-built, and we maintain everything way above industry standards. So I live one hour straight east of here, and, uh, I go by everything at least once a month, and if there's anything coming apart or not looking correct, I fix it, so.
Dwayne, I have a question for you.
Yes.
On, uh, if, if you're, on your site one there, I don't know if this is gonna work, but on your site one right here.
Yeah.
This intersection is terrible for crossing.
This one right here.
Yeah, that's site, yeah, site one.
Yeah.
Uh, what are the chances that people coming down this highway are gonna, that that sign's gonna block any kind of view? Or is it gonna distract them so that when they're reading your billboard, they're not paying attention to that intersection? That's my concern.
I can talk about distractions and accidents, or I, I can list, I can give you, I don't know, a dozen, uh, of them, both locally and by the federal, uh, highway administration, that there is no increase in accidents whatsoever around a billboard as opposed to having nothing there. Um, as far as the blocking the traffic, that's one of the beauties of having a single pole sign, and we're gonna have it up about, probably about twelve to fourteen feet above ground level. So it has less distraction than it would be that says highway five, next exit. Um, and then again, also it'll have to be set back off the right-of-way, uh, so you're probably gonna be, I think it's gonna be probably around seventy-five feet, um, in that area, so I don't see where it would cause any problem whatsoever.
Is it gonna be on the south side of the tracks?
It will be on the south side, yes, yep, that's where the rail authority's got their tracks, yep.
Looks like it's not.
No, it's in between this tracks.
In between the tracks.
Between the tracks and the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So. The right-of-way.
South side of the highway.
The right-of-way will be halfway between here, uh, so you'll have the, the way it'll go is you'll have the center line.
You'll have the center line of the road, then you will have the right-of-way, um, and then, uh, that's where our sign would start, and then the, the la, that, well, that's where the right-of-way ends, that's where the rail authority property begins. Um, the reason we located them right there is because the rail authority, um, their track is offset, it's not exactly in the same, and I prefer to put up a ten by thirty, which is what we've got a number of them around, that's kind of a standard size, and that would allow us to do, um, to put it up in those areas there. Uh, because then, after you get a little bit farther, closer to downtown here, um, it goes back over to the center of their one-hundred-foot right-of-way, or the piece of property that they've got. So.
Is it, I know in Arlington, uh, both of their signs that you, that you have.
Yes.
I think right now you got the, the, uh, insurance guy, like this, whatever. Uh, they're both out of, out of town, like when you go into town, there's one, and then you go on the other side, you go out. Is there, can you, can you push them out, like, where the welcome to Gaylord sign is? You know, or that's just.
To move them farther east, you're talking about, the structures?
The, the sign, so like right now, you're here, right at the sign, can you just?
You, 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 do, do. Yeah.
Is it possible to move, move that way a little bit, so people are coming into town? So that way it's not so close to that, that, I, I, I'm just concerned about.
I would rather not, just because you've got a significant amount of traffic coming on highway nineteen that blends into that, and we would lose that if we went farther beyond or went up north and east from that intersection.
One of his, you can't put it in state ri- right-of-way.
No.
You'd have to work with a private property owner then, and he'd have to.
Right.
Work through that and negotiate and hopefully be able to even do it. That'd be one of his challenges.
So.
Keep in mind, hopefully that intersection's gonna move to, at some point, they reroute nineteen up to.
I mean, Scott, you're gonna be the one writing the accident reports.
I, I don't think there'll be that many. Honestly, when I, when you brought that up, I'm like, I'm trying to think of as, how many I've been to that are by billboards, and I'm like.
How high is that, off the ground?
Be about twelve feet to the bottom of the walkways. Now, you've probably seen billboards along one sixty-nine, um, thirty-five W, this is a significantly smaller. Those are six hundred and seventy-two square feet, so the ones we're proposing would be, uh, three hundred square feet, so less than half. In fact, it's the same size as the ones, you've got, uh, one on the west side of town, you've got one on the east side of town right now.
You know, the cars, they turn out, you know, have curve there to look down there, that's.
I just, I don't wanna get too, too far off in the weeds though, I mean, either, you know, we're sending this down to planning and zoning to look at it, and then they can, they look into, they can look over all them details and.
Not necessarily looking for approval tonight, I'm looking for if you're willing to allow the planning and zoning to go ahead and research and look into this, and then potentially come back with a, and come back with a recommendation.
We have rental rates to talk about yet, and stuff.
I'm fine giving it back to planning and zoning.
Yeah. I know planning and zoning will do a good job with the research, so I'm comfortable with that.
So, that's it? Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Okay, moving on to eleven C, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, a resolution accepting grant navigator, navigator funding. I will turn that over to Steve.
Yeah, if you had a chance to read my request for council action, pretty much all the details are there, but we were the recipient of five thousand dollar grant that will cover the cost for our consultant, who prepared the application for the workforce housing grant, application for the, um, the Deval housing, hopefully that sixteen-unit apartment building. So, um, part of the requirements is, is this, um, resolution that the league of Minnesota cities requires then to accept the grant.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Moco, seconded by Eker, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Did we, did we need consensus on that last item to send it to planning and zoning?
I thought that's what you did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay. And that's noted that we're not talking about everything, it is, right now, is it's, it's I three only. It's not the entire city, anywhere, everywhere.
You're implying a zoning rate.
I just wanted to make sure that's clear, that, that, this is just to look at that area, I three.
Correct.
Yep. Yeah, I agree, I don't want it anywhere else.
So the people don't read the paper and get the wrong idea that billboards would be going up on all edges, all over town. If, if, if that happens, so. Okay, sorry.
Do we vote on that last one? I got sidetracked now.
No.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Okay, okay, so we're on eleven D, Oaks Lakeside Pavilion rental rates. I think we did. Okay, I'll turn that one over to Steve, too.
Uh, the last meeting, you talked briefly about, uh, possibly establishing some rates for the pavilion for smaller events. Uh, as you recall, you, you do have two rates right now. Um, you identify like for nonprofit civic organizations and other things that you would do a three hundred dollar fee compared to the, the, that's half of the fee for those types of organizations. Uh, but we've experienced a little bit about, some people have not, are not willing to pay the top fee, um, which is six hundred dollars, uh, for their smaller events. Like the graduation parties, reunions, weddings, baby showers, birthdays, et cetera. Uh, so you, uh, you directed us to do some research here and did come back with a couple. Um, some of the other ones that we had or found, um, were related though, um, either for a specific room or they were related to the number of people attending, and so, um, I didn't include those. Uh, one sample was though from Sleepy Eye, their, for their event center, they charged ten dollars per person for any weekend event.
That would be so hard to monitor.
Yeah.
Like, I would not wanna be the one county heads.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be challenging. Uh, so anyway, the two that are in your packet are in reference to the Brownton, their civic center, and then, uh, Richter Woods Barn, um, over by Lesure County Parks. Uh, so basically here tonight to have a discussion as far as if you want to go look at establishing some smaller rates.
I don't think we have a choice if we wanna rent that out, I just.
Yeah, I think.
Smaller.
When I review this, I like that Brownton has a larger damage deposit, because I know our concern with doing this was cleaning fees, so I think by having a cheaper rate for smaller events, but a decent-sized damage deposit, that's gonna cover us if there is, you know, if, if there's not a good job cleaning or it's a complete mess. I did like that about their policy.
Yeah, I also liked Brownton's in the way it was, um, broken down into hours. So there's a lot of different opportunities for people for different things that they're doing, um, and they seem quite reasonable, so.
I know the one thing that was brought up last time though was that by doing that, let's say tomorrow somebody rents it for a weekend in September for two hours, and then the next day somebody calls and wants it all day for a big wedding, now it's tied up yet, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we look at it in addition to this, do we look at it like a, a wedding rate versus a non-wedding rate? Or, that wouldn't even make sense, I'm sorry, take that back, but I do think weddings should have priority, because that's kind of what it's for, and that's how we're gonna recoup some funds.
But aren't they, aren't they scheduled first?
They're usually scheduled a year in advance.
Yeah, I mean, they usually are.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's true, that's gonna take a lot of care, uh, take care of it.
I think we may run into that, just because, you know, if somebody really wants it, they may book it, and, I mean, not to say that that couldn't happen. Um, where we would miss out on that, but I think if we don't do anything, then I think it will be hard. At least, yeah, at least in the beginning, because people don't really know, they haven't been in there, they don't know what to expect, they haven't seen it, you know, decorated or any events in there yet, so I think for now, we need to just be able to advertise it and let people be coming in at a reasonable rate and then see where that goes. I mean, all of it is, like, we don't know, so it's, guess our best. But get it utilized.
So what rate structure do you like then?
I like Brownton's.
The only thing that concerns me about Brown, Brownton's is the six-plus hours, you know, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and we're looking at weddings that, you know, the fee is six hundred for an all-day event, so I don't know that, I mean, I think we should cap it at six hours, anything more than that, when you have it all day, you have to pay the six hundred.
Right.
Like, I don't think it should be six-plus hours.
Just be up to six hours.
Up to six hours.
Up to six.
Mm-hmm.
Or, or maybe we can get rid of, because we already got four to six.
Yeah, you got four to six, so.
Yeah, so maybe we just get rid of that, I mean, anything over six, you're putting the all-day rate. Does that make sense?
What about we cap it at four?
Yeah, I'm okay, I just feel at some point we gotta cap it and then put it all day.
Right, because then the hours too would be, somebody comes in and rents it, depends on the hours that they rent it, though. Like, when you're thinking showers and that kind of thing, I'm thinking that they're gonna have to have four hours really, if they wanna do any kind of setup and then, you know, go through the shower and get out of there on time. I don't think you can hardly do less than four.
No, we're just, maybe just leave it up to six. Cause yeah, I mean, family reunions, showers could go, even graduation parties, you know, those are usually four hours, like, people have them from one to four, or one to, you know, but then you have your setup time and your cleanup time.
Yeah, you gotta clean up, yeah. I like the structure of it, it's like maybe the rates we would have to look at a little differently, I'm not sure, but.
What's our rate now, five hundred?
Five hundred or six hundred.
Six.
Six.
With the four hundred dollar deposit.
We're, we're talking about leaving that alone, but doing some, a smaller scale.
They've got like down below there.
Yeah, I think we should leave that alone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Down below there where they got events, they still have like reception, you know, they got fees in there for all that, like a public dance officer required. So that doesn't fall under that hourly.
Right.
That sounds good.
Sure. It's hard somewhere.
Not my specialty.
Well, I think we need to get it used.
Mm-hmm.
Rates are reasonable, people will use it, we're gonna get feedback if they liked it, if they come again. If a lot of people using like it, and maybe then we can look at down the road if it needs to be adjusted or whatever.
And then we'll be able to judge if we're really covering everything we need to cover, too.
Right.
Is that enough money?
Right, I, I agree with you, Scott, I mean, if we're losing people that wanna use it for two to four hours, then.
Yeah, it's not doing us any good.
Yeah.
No.
It's an empty.
Yep.
And with the higher damage deposit, like you said, hopefully that'll force people to do a good job of cleaning up, so that puts less on, on the city for having to worry about spending a lot of time down there really getting it cleaned up.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
So you like those dollar amounts in the timeframes except up to six hours?
Just up to six, yeah.
Yep, after six hours, it's the all-day rate.
Well, like on there, that rate, it says six-plus hours entire day, that, that, so.
Yeah, but that's only.
We would just have the four to six.
Yes. Right? Yep, we'd have the, those categories, but then, yeah.
And then the entire day would jump to the.
The R.
To R.
Yep.
We'll need a motion for that.
Okay.
Those kinda low, though, I mean.
I do feel like those rates.
A, a little low, yeah.
I wonder if we shift, shift them all twenty-five dollars, so zero to two is a hundred dollars. Or I'm sorry, it's fifty dollars.
Fifty, yeah.
Two to four is seventy-five, four to six is a hundred.
Sure. Yes, agreed.
Like add twenty-five dollars on each of those. Or do you think they should be higher than that?
I'm just wondering, I mean, is, is anybody gonna have a zero to two hour deal? Is that, I mean, they had a meeting or?
Yeah, a meeting, maybe. But that's about it.
Here, do you go zero to?
That's what I was wanting, zero to four.
Zero to, less, I'm just do zero to four.
So we'd have like zero to four hours.
And then four to six.
Right, then we have a minimum of seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars for zero to four and a hundred dollars for four to six?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Or not.
Yeah.
No, I like that.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's gonna use a zero to two hours.
Keeps it simple.
Yep.
Yeah.
Nice and simple, yep, I like that. Okay, so can we get a motion with those fees as we just discussed?
So move.
Yeah.
Motion by Coofal, seconded by Moco, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Last item on our agenda is to schedule a work session meeting.
Do we have council in two weeks? Do we have council two weeks from today?
No.
No.
No, it's Tuesday.
Twenty-sixth. We, you guys changed it because of the holiday.
We did.
The nineteenth is a holiday, so we did that a while ago.
And then no July first meeting?
So this is for the purpose of, uh, can, talking about updating our capital product list. Uh, this is basically our street capital projects. Uh, uh, also includes like things like our public works garage. So there's a copy of, on your table of, of the large, um, in a large format of what was adopted last year. So we, we go through the exercise of updating this e, each year. So, um, Justin Black will be here from S C H. And so we thought that we would start with a work session. Cause there's, can be a little bit involved in this discussion versus a, a regular meeting. So I'm asking if that would be acceptable? We would do it that way versus in a regular meeting to start with?
They're still missing the block of Main Street by West G.
Oh.
So what, what date are we talking about?
Then our next meeting, June twenty-sixth at five thirty.
The six o'clock?
Ah, yeah, right for this? Yeah, I agree.
We can get it done.
It, it forces, well, that was.
Yeah.
I, I just like tonight. I mean, it's, if we would've had three alternatives to look at, I understand having a long meeting, but.
Right, we had one. Either we're accepting what they have or we gotta come up with a difference.
Or somebody's gonna come up with some grand idea at the meeting. I mean, really, there wasn't much choice to be had tonight. It was more informational. They did a great job updating the council and what we should be looking at next year with the ambulance, you know, replacement schedule and stuff. But other than that, I, I mean, why have these endless meetings when there's no options? But this I could see, you know, maybe before you had.
One of the things we'll, we'll be to Lake Ticklow Dam. And so keep that in mind. Committee has been meeting and, um, we have that five hundred thousand dollar allocation. We have until December of twenty twenty-seven to enter an agreement with the state for the project. So there is a little time there, but at the same time, you have to decide whether or not you wanna do the project or not.
Well, that's a yes or a no, so.
We better do it or it'll, we'll take it off of every list though. Now, that wasn't the, that wasn't through the bonding bill. That was through the, what, what pot of money is?
I'm, I, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head, but you're right. It was not.
They changed something. It's like nobody knows where the money's coming from. It took them, like the D N R was supposed to have answers to people and they didn't know.
Yeah, right. That's why it took so long to find out a lot of that question, answers to our questions. Because they weren't sure exactly what were the parameters, because it wasn't under the bonding bill.
Do they still have legislatures coming to those meetings, like Greenhagen and whoever, uh, I mean, that they're down the road here to get some more funding from the state or?
We, we will not be able to get any more funding. You can't piggyback more state funding onto an already state-funded, um, for the project. So we will not get anything more from the state for this project.
Well, we have to start like feasibility, design.
Exactly. There's a lot to this, so there's.
We need a timeline, like.
Yeah. And again, this is a matching, this is a match. So if, if the product comes in under, say, a million dollars, we won't get five hundred. We'll get something less. But we will only get a maximum of five hundred.
I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I think we'll be coming up with more than five hundred thousand.
There, there's a, there's more things involved here. I mean, there's.
So hey, I got something to talk about. So I don't, I know we can talk about this at the next two weeks meeting for our hour, right?
Yep, five thirty.
I got some.
Four to five minutes.
Okay, so are we going to, we need a motion though to schedule a work session meeting five thirty on June twenty-sixth. Motion by Moco, do we have a second? Seconded by Eker. Are, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Tony, floor is yours.
Counsel, just one quick thing. Um, so I, I don't, I don't know about everybody else, but I feel like I get lost on some of these projects that just keep popping up like months later. And then, you know, there's an issue with something. So I was talking to Steve about this and I asked, uh, in the past about like tracking projects. So that, uh, we have, it's still on a board somewhere or a spreadsheet or there's some way of tracking things, right? And so when I was asking Steve about like the three things that I listed were like the red, red brick property across the street. Like just to keep it on like a, a, a monthly update, like for some, an example could be how he sends out the report about people that request permits, right? An Excel spreadsheet, red brick, what the status is, just so that we know. Because every once in a while, this guy's like a whack a mole. He just pops up and then he wants to sue us or whatever. Cause we don't seem to know what's going on until all of a sudden he randomly pops up. Like I didn't know, uh, the last I heard the building was condemned. And then the next thing I heard, he's.
He's got apartments.
He's got apartments and he's getting ready to rent, right? I didn't, I had no clue. And it's the same thing with this building, uh, down the street, right? Next thing I know, like the building's, uh, getting ready to, there's bricks getting ready to fall off of it, right? And it's got, uh, uh, oil or whatever inside there. And Steve had talked about some guy, one of his friends or somebody he knows drove by it and they're talking about it could potentially cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to get the building tore down. But we really haven't heard much status about that. So just some of these things are on, on the map that at some point we might have to engage in, just so that we're not forgetting these things. And then even the Wagonias property, I know Steve told us that there's potential that we could have some liability there. But I guess I didn't know that, uh, he told us, but I forgot and that, and that's my fault, that they were, there were charges that were being assessed to Wagonias. But just to track it, like, you know, he's, he's getting these bills monthly and this is what he owes. Just so that everybody kinda knows like what the status is and what's going on with these different properties. So, so my, my thought was just to have like a, a, a tracking sheet that gets pushed out monthly. It, it doesn't need to be anything more than.
A simple spreadsheet.
A simple spreadsheet. I'm not asking Steve to reinvent the wheel, but just so it's there so that everybody knows, hey, this project is still out there. It's looming. And it's not, it's not done. Just so everybody knows, like, it's still there. We, we.
Status hasn't changed, but nothing.
Yes. I'm not asking, again, I'm not asking to reinvent the wheel or, or do anything extra. So I just want to know your guys' thoughts if that's way out there.
Might cut down on his, uh, three-page email, I'm afraid.
I kind of enjoy reading his emails, but.
I, I agree though what you're saying, like that building over here, it's on a radar for quite a while and talking about it and all of a sudden it's, nothing's been brought up on it in months. It's like, yeah, where, where are, where are things at with that? But just keeping that so that we don't lose track of it, knowing that, yeah, at some point we still got that to worry about.
Like historic document preservation? Did we ever get those documents all scanned or?
Well, we used to, there was always a, that was, we used to have a list like Tony's talking about on, on the whiteboard and. Historic document preservation was one of them. And I know there was a pile of documents that we would've liked to get copied, scanned. Okay. So those, that, there's something that should get done. I mean, we probably all agree on that. It's, and stuff like that probably make, yeah, how much, how much were we talking?
We used to put five thousand away every year and we'd use all of it, then you'd have twenty a day. So there's no money right now to do that.
Okay, but that, that's exactly one of those things that we haven't talked about in, in a, in at least two, three, four years. That should be on this list that they're just sitting back there. And if we don't take care of it or allocate funds to get them, uh, logged in, scanned in, it's, they're sitting there, but.
Right.
Have you, did you even know about that?
No, so it's been four years.
And so there, there's, there's, there's value to what Tony said. And, and it used to be on the whiteboard because I, I, I had, I know I talked to Kevin about it years ago. And then one day the wei, wei, whiteboard gets cleaned.
And it was gone.
Projects are done.
They're done.
Yeah, I was thinking of the dirt pile while Tony was talking.
That ain't gonna, it's gonna outlast potentially everybody on the council.
Yeah, or.
Steve's gonna retire, I mean.
The property that, uh, Swenson owns that, you know, nobody knew about that we were getting paid for.
That he uses air between the.
Yeah.
All these weird things that, you know, I don't know how you, are, do you have reminders set every twelve months for some of that stuff to pop up? If, if there ain't paperwork or an email that comes across your desk, uh, or computer.
As far as the agreements and stuff?
Right.
Yeah, we kinda have an ongoing thing there, yep.
Steve's got a really big brain.
I'm not, I'm not alone though. I'm keeping track of some of this stuff.
No, I understand, but there's, there's things like that where all of a sudden the agreement don't get renewed. And both parties, you know, either forget or conveniently forget one side. Anyway, but yeah, I agree with Tony. I think, I think it's a value to keep, at least have them on the list. Some of these problems are not, they're gonna outlive the council, the current council.
And that dirt pile is exactly like, uh, people just forgot about it and then all of a sudden they wanna do that right away. And everybody's like, oh, who's responsible for that? That's all I was asking Steve. It's not, it's more our fault because we forget, you know?
All of us, we have so much information that's, you know, given to us every month. It's hard to.
Well, until you hear something about it again, then it's like, oh yeah, that's right.
That's right.
It's like a dirt pile. Somebody complains all of a sudden and say, oh yeah, that's right, that's still there and.
Okay. So how do you want me to provide that?
I think whatever format is easiest for you. I don't want this to be.
Like in a council packet kind of thing?
No, I think like an Excel, an Excel worksheet.
Right.
Yeah.
But I mean, just put it out with my Friday update email.
But not every, I don't think.
No, just once a month. I think maybe like the first or last.
Whatever's easy, again, I mean, I don't want this to be user-friendly for you, whatever format and whatever.
Yeah, well.
Whatever, you know, once a month and you choose when you wanna send it out, the first Friday or the last Friday of the month.
Yeah, I, I would think that we put like all, everything down and if you use an Excel sheet, then you can update like dates. But just everything's right there for you and you can put an update if needed.
And this won't be just mine. This would be police, public works as well. Possibly fire as, as appropriate library. Is that okay? Is that, is that what you're thinking too?
Yeah, I guess if the list gets like way out of control, like we need a new battery for the fire truck, you know? We don't wanna go down that.
I'm not gonna get that detailed.
Right, right.
No.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going down that rabbit hole. But yeah, the big projects, yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Um, anything else? Any closing comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Sell my pointer for five dollars after the meeting.
I think you, we all need those. Um, we have a motion to adjourn from Eker. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.